ultimate tandem, ultimate Grover, ultimate Rainey, ultimate Burris, ultimate Fisk, ultimate Rathwaith, ultimate Win, nine zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, March 19th, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First on the agenda is Mayor's public announcements. I would like to let all the folks who are very concerned about trees know that House Bill 3884 discusses Overhead Utility Damage Prevention Act from Representative Jack D. Franks. Creates the Overhead Utility Facilities Damage Prevention Act, provides that it shall be unlawful for any person to plant restricted vegetation within 20 feet of an electric utility pole or overhead electrical conductor located within the state. Provides that any restricted vegetation planted, whether by a person or by natural means, within 20 feet of an electric utility pole or overhead electrical conductor located within the state shall be subject to removal. Provides that any person who sells restricted vegetation within this state shall affix a label to each piece of restricted vegetation, identifying it as restricted vegetation. Permits the Illinois Commerce Commission to adopt rules concerning the removal of restricted vegetation. Provides that it shall be unlawful for any person to interfere with an electric utility while performing vegetation management and removal activities. Basically, the utilities can cut down any trees they wish, and the Northwest Municipal Conference is opposing this, and it is possible that some of Evanston's citizens might wish to oppose it as well. Are the Dorches here yet?
Not yet.
All right, well, I think we'll wait, we'll have public comments, and then we'll continue with the Mayor's announcements. Each speaker has three minutes. If you would please give your name and address before speaking, that would be terrific. And I'm going to call up the first four speakers. Bonnie Wilson, Kevin O'Connor, Mike Vasilko, and Junad Riske.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Wilson, Evanston Township Assessor, and I would like to make a couple of announcements. I want to remind all the taxpayers who are over 65 that they need to file for a senior exemption each year. Many of you might have gotten confused when you saw the senior freeze and senior exemption come on the same form. Even though you might not qualify for a senior freeze, you will need to apply for a senior exemption to receive your exemption on the second installment tax bill. It is the law that you need to apply each year for a senior exemption. The deadline for the senior exemption and senior freeze is March 28th. To qualify for a senior freeze, your household income needs to be under $55,000 a year. The Cook County Assessor's Office is now open for appeals for Evanston, and the appeal deadline is Monday, March 26th. Please call the Evanston Township Assessor's Office to make an appointment for appeals or for your exemptions. Our office hours are from 8:30 to 5:00 during the week. We will also be open this Saturday, March 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. to accommodate those taxpayers who cannot come in in the office during the week. The office is located at 846 Dodge, at the southwest corner of Dodge and Main, and the phone number is 847-332-2465. And I'm encouraging everyone to call to make an appointment instead of just walking in because sometimes you have appointments and you have to wait a while before you can get service. In the last month, the Evanston Township Assessor's Office has seen over 334 taxpayers that came into our office for appeals, exemptions, or even both. Also, I want to mention that I was not able to attend the last Human Services meeting. This is the first meeting that I've missed in two and a half years. I even attended these meetings before I became assessor, and yes, it was a holiday. And if you were questioning the tax exempt and the late fees, as mentioned in the February meeting, the late fees are always reversed because of the timing of paying the bill. And Val Weidman always gets, I'm talking about the Office Depot bills, we've, she always gets the late fees reversed, so we don't have to pay them. Also, the Office Depot bill was set up by the former assessor, and a tax-exempt ID was not provided. Therefore, we were being charged taxes, and Val Weidman was able to change to a tax-exempt status, which I've mentioned to you in the February meeting. I would also like to ask the trustees that if you have any questions before the Human Services meeting or City Council meeting, that you let the township supervisor or I know in advance so that we can have the answers for you at the meetings or before the meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half, Isabella. Signed up for non-agenda and agenda, my non-agenda. The question on the ballot tomorrow is should the Evanston Town Board continue to pursue the issue of dissolving Evanston Township? Our ethically-challenged Democratic Party of Evanston, however, I received this propaganda in my mailbox, says dissolve Evanston Township government, vote yes. I do not see anything neutral there at all, and it well may be illegal in some sort. Number two, Agenda Item A6. $2.4 million on new fleet purchases in the past, for tonight's council. In the past three budgets, hardly any change in maintenance budget in spite of all the new vehicles. Drive by here on a weekend and look in the lot. Looks pretty nice, even though we're broke. Agenda Item A8. City of Evanston is charging $5 per foot for easement agreement with Evanston Ventures Partners for a total of $3,050. City allegedly relies on administrative policy for this. Where is that policy? We're a bankrupt city, and we should be charging more. Agenda Item 01. Window facade improvement program rebate, I'm sorry, window facade improvement program rebate slash forgivable loan, up to half the project cost. We're broke. Why that's in there, I do not know. That's shameful. Finally, my FOIA request dated 3/5/12 for all emails, et cetera, regarding the Trader Joe's deal, Terrico Development and NU was denied. Now that the City of Evanston is planning on spending our tax dollars of $1.4 million, and the packet contains contracts of the inside, non-transparent deal dated 10/3/11 and 10/5/11, I call for a full outside impartial investigation of this behind closed doors deal that does not pass the smell test. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue. I'll speak tonight on a couple of issues, one of which was there's an issue coming forward, I guess, maybe tonight regarding the Evanston Wellmet Golf Course. They want free water. Every business in Evanston and every residence in Evanston, they pay for their water bills. A recreational business such as the golf course, for the happy few that use it and have time and money to pay for it, should find the extra money to pay for their water bill. Please reject that request. Second, I believe, it's my opinion, that the hands-free phone ban is slightly overreaching. I would not be in favor of that. I agree with the current ban, restricting handheld phone use, of course, and I don't believe that the use of hands-free devices is any more distracting than, you know, 50 to 100 other item, things that people do when they're driving. People switch radio stations, adjust the fans on their heat and air conditioning, temperature controls, mirrors, et cetera. They eat, drink in the cars. So I don't think those things are any more distracting than, or I don't think that the hand-free use of its cellphone is any more distracting than that, and I would not be in favor of the ban. I've spoken, third item, I spoke several times before and have written emails to the council regarding the request to have public meetings to discuss the draft Economic Development Plan, which is on the agenda tonight. That plan was put forth in a Economic Development Committee meeting. It was swiftly referred to the council, appeared on the council agenda for action. I had a misunderstanding, I guess, that there was going to be at least one community meeting before your vote. Apparently, that's not the case, and I would encourage that it be postponed, the vote be postponed until there is at least one or two community meetings. Chicago put forth a pretty thorough economic development plan, which I circulated to everyone, and I think Evanston deserves something similar to that for our future. Lastly, and just quickly, I know this, the Fifth Ward School is more of a subject for the school board, but there is, there was an article in the Tribune a couple of days ago that caught my attention because it had a map inside that illustrated the Fifth Ward being the most densely populated African-American community population in Evanston. And I think if, I'm in favor of the school for many reasons, but it's no more evident than just looking at that one illustration to understand why it's far too long that a school in the Fifth Ward has been, has not taken place. Not having a K through five school in the Fifth Ward, I think, is somewhat discriminatory against the African-American community. For those in Evanston who say we can't afford the school right now, I would suggest that we consider closing one of the existing schools, like Willard or Lincolnwood, use that money, sell that property, use that money to pay for the new school, and kids from those other neighborhoods could be bused to the Fifth Ward. I think that'd be a fair compromise. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Junad Riske. When I heard about the Trader Joe's, I thought for once we had a project where taxpayers' money was not used. I had my doubts, and I guess my doubts were confirmed. We can't do economic development here without giving away the taxpayers' money to the tune now of almost $2 million. This, this is, seems typical of all our economic developments, such as a wine and cheese bar on Howard Street where we're giving away large sums of money to basically another group Frankly, council members, our tax dollars are not your monopoly money with a debt of over $5 million, $500 million here and like, yes, last year's effective tax increase of 8%. And really, the basic continued misuse of our water rate funds to the tune of $7 million a year to keep the operating funds of the city afloat. This continued misuse of money really is outrageous. The shell game that the parking fund might actually have money in it is interesting, too, given how the money's moving between these funds. Along with the mistakes of staff, like last year's yard waste sticker debacle, which cost us some over $1 million, this continued giveaway of our capital is destroying, basically, the city's ability to do any capital. When you approve this, which you no doubt will do, I suggest that each one of you tell us what you think the tax, next year's tax, property tax increase will be. And please don't distort it like was recently distorted in the highlights about the operating, that we did not raise our property taxes here. And I'll say one last thing, too, about the trees, since the mayor brought that up. Basically, what's going to happen, if Commonwealth Edison gets this, it'll, can clear-cut, basically, 20 feet on your property. So basically, think of all the houses in Evanston on the alleys, where they'll go right down the alley and they could take 20 feet into your yard, cut down your trees, and that's what they're going to do. It's by a Democrat, too, out in Woodstock, so frankly, basically, that's not surprising that they want to interfere in your lives like that. But basically, they also, reading some of the articles, Edison's going to charge you for this. So they're not going to reimburse people. They're going to take these trees down if this goes through, and the taxpayers will get stuck with it on the parkways, and private homeowners are going to get stuck. So it's not, it's pretty, it's a pretty dangerous thing. But it just, you know, the city lukewarmly saying there's a problem, let's not screw this up like you did with the AT&amp;T boxes, please.
Thank you. Next, Sharon Ekersol, Padma Rao, BK Rao, and Jeff Smith.
Good evening, Sharon Ekersol, 2519 Ashland. I'm here to, one, for one thing, Assessor Wilson mentioned that they weren't tax-exempt. When I held the office as assessor, I did have a card that I presented upon purchases. Not all the time did it get credited. We would have to go back, but we did have a tax-exempt number. Number two, Ordinance A10 tonight is stating that, according to Evanston Now, that we would be spending $1.4 million to purchase the property at 1225 Chicago Avenue. The assessed value is currently about 1.5, but as we all know, assessed value is higher than what the property is worth. Has anybody gotten an up-to-date commercial appraisal on that land? I would like to know that because that's very important, since I do a lot in the appraisal field. Also, township bills. I was at the Human Service meeting, and when I was assessor, if I wasn't present and bills got questioned, I had to wait till the next Human Service Committee meeting to get them paid. I find it hard to believe that Supervisor Vance is asking for an exception in rules when I think it should be brought back to the Human Service Committee for vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. We object to this council's vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death and endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. Instead of addressing our concerns, the Evanston Patch reported that your first ward member assured the developer's lawyer that your vote would be pushed through no matter what. Doesn't this show an arrogant disregard for taxpayers? The developer's lawyer's letter in the packet for your meeting on March 14, 2011 states that Holland and Knight was hired to sue the city, but you had paid and were still paying that same firm several thousands of tax dollars. You did nothing to protect the taxpayers' rights and funds from this conflict of interest. Instead, your mayor, your lawyer, and your eighth ward member repeatedly attacked us. Why? Is it because your first ward member's son works for the same firm? Don't you have a duty to protect the taxpayers from such conflicts of interest rather than covering them up? Don't you have a duty to report such misconduct pursuant to the Illinois Supreme Court's decision in Henry Himmel? Is this council trying to set a record for conflicts of interest? In addition to your conflicts of interest in the Kendall matter, you have conflicts of interest regarding the township. Your lawyer admitted to a conflict of interest in the township matter, but continues to interfere in it. You owe a fiduciary duty to the township and its electors, but instead of fulfilling that duty, you try to silence objections to your scheme to dismantle the safety net for our neediest neighbors. When the township is doing its job by helping people, why do you seek to pillage its funds? Is it to pay for your pet projects and personal vendettas? Did you ever consider the people who depend on the township's services? Or are you too blinded by greed and arrogance to do so? What about the costly litigation due to your bad behavior and your lawyer's bad advice? Whether or not your case with Viola has any merit, doesn't your eighth ward member's trumpeting her animus against Viola make your motives look suspect? Why did your eighth ward member eagerly preserve this evidence of a predisposition towards prejudice?
Alderman Grover, can you wait till she's done? Thank you. Go ahead.
Are you interrupting or not?
We are not.
Fine. Whether or not your case against Viola has any merit, doesn't your eighth ward member's trumpeting her animus against Viola make your motives look suspect? Why did your eighth ward member eagerly preserve this evidence of a predisposition towards prejudice in the public record? Whether or not your case with the keg has any merit, the Daily Northwestern reported that your lawyer insisted on using a prank Twitter account as incontrovertible proof despite one liquor board member's view that it was not useful in light of other information. The Daily added that qualified attorneys said that using the Twitter account rendered the decision problematic because such hearsay should not be relied upon, and that if the decision was even partly based on it, then the decision is wrong. How much more will your tantrums and your lawyer's blunders cost taxpayers?
So Rao, you need to wrap up.
Why don't you hire competent counsel for the city and act according to competent advice? Stop wasting tax dollars and start respecting taxpayers. Let the township keep helping my neighbors. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Until you do, I'll see you all next time.
Alderman Grover.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that Ms. Rao had my card with my cellphone number, with the invitation to talk sometime. And I just want to remind council and the speakers that our committee, the council rules and Roberts Rules of Order certainly contemplate passion and advocacy, but they do not contemplate breaches of decorum, name-calling, and personal attacks. Just a reminder. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you characterizing as a personal attack?
If you'd like to submit your remarks in writing, and we can take a look and discuss them.
They were approved and reviewed by my attorney, and as far as wanting to discuss things off the record, if you want to discuss, you know that I am represented by council. You may contact my attorney.
And it was just an invitation to talk, and if you're not interested in talking, then that's fine, too. But you're welcome anytime to call me. Thank you.
Alderman Grover, are you inviting me also, or no? Okay. I'm just making sure. PK Rao, 2246 Sherman Avenue. My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. My concerns are always about the historical trees that this council voted to kill at the Kendall property and the resulting impact on the environment. I am also disturbed by the dangers that result from the proposed alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. To add to my concerns, the city seems determined to pursue a scheme to raid the township, which will result in cutting off the last source of help for the neediest among us. Is it really worthwhile for the council to plot against another duly-elected governmental entity that is doing its job? What exactly is happening to this great city known as Evanston? On March 10th, I had the privilege to meet with the most distinguished Evanston mayor, the one and only Lorraine Morton. Mayor Morton's contributions to this city are many, but the secret to her never-fading smiley is that she treated every Evanstonian, black and white, rich and poor, male and female, as her equals. I suggest that this council learn something from her example and modify its behavior and attitude towards fellow Evanstonians. Then we can all be better persons. As for your case with the keg, who entered flimsy hearsay into a hearing record without verification or the slightest bitting of facts? How foolish, stupid, and incompetent do you want to appear before your constituents? Who is responsible for the inept investigation into the keg that was based on a prank Twitter account? Who is so negligent that he failed to check his facts before making false allegations and thereby jeopardized the city's reputation for integrity before state officials and Evanston's own citizens? Whoever is responsible for this fiasco should be promptly fired, as he would be in the private sector. This council should do its duty to restore Evanston's integrity. So put your egos behind and put Evanston first. I hope you will improve. We deserve better Evanston and better Evanston City Council. See you again. I'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Jeff Smith, 2724 Harrison. Forgive me if those are tough acts to follow. Evanston has earned recognition, some nationwide, for its leadership in sustainability. I'm here to thank the city for offering the community the opportunity to vote yes on aggregating our electric supply. A yes vote on electricity aggregation in the referendum tomorrow, most people realize, offers us the opportunity to save significant sums for residents and businesses on the power components of our electric bills. Maybe not everybody realizes it also is an opportunity to make significant advances towards sustainability by pursuing a green energy option. Some municipalities, such as Oak Park, have already done this. Oak Park found that it was able to reduce its power costs, the power portion of the electric bills, by almost 25%, and at the same time offer its residents a 100% green energy option. This is following the industry that has helped create over 13,000 jobs in Illinois in the, in recent years. If we do this, we won't be the first, but we'll still be showing leadership. I'm here to hand up to the city manager 40 separate letters that I've been asked to present on behalf of members of the Sierra Club, urging the city to do exactly that if, as we hope, the referendum passes tomorrow. Again, we won't be the first, but it would still display leadership, and I assure you that if we follow that pursuit of a green energy option, you will have the support of the electorate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Tom Fischel and Harriet Salak.
Hi, good evening, men of mayor, city council, citizens of Evanston. My name is Tom Fischel, and I live at 2519 Ashland Avenue. Last November, I attended a budget workshop where I saw a proposal to spend up to $150,000 on remodeling a unit in the Maple Avenue Garage that has been vacant since the garage was built. The funding was intended to lure business to that location. I sent one of my infamous emails to you, Mayor Tisdale, and to City Manager Bob Kuwitz, stating that for $150,000, I could remodel the space, reopen official sports, which I have long claimed was forced out of business by the city, and repay the $150,000 back to the taxpayers. As a result of the email, a conversation began between myself and a newly-hired staff member of the Economic Development Department. The staff member asked me if I would be interested in one of the other vacant units that the city had paid for with the Sherman Avenue Garage, and we began talking to the leasing agent of that spaces. At one point, the staff member asked me to send him an email that I was no longer interested in the Maple Avenue Garage space, which couldn't be further from the truth. However, I was going to do whatever it would take to get my business back open again. A few weeks ago, I ran into a community activist who assured me that my proposal would be denied without going through due process. The next day, I received an email from the mayor that my proposal was, in fact, denied. The city staff member called me to confirm the decision. I followed up with a demand to make my presentation before the Economic Development Committee, regardless of the predetermination of my request. I showed up on February 22nd with my video camera in order to capture the moment on tape. However, prior to the EDC meeting, a township meeting was going on that was held in this room, and an attorney from Michael Madigan's office was going to be making a presentation, which caught my attention. When I found out the city was not going to televise the township meeting, I decided to turn on my camera and capture the moment, and what a moment it was. I then later made my presentation before the EDC Committee, expressing my displeasure with the process, and I was given an extension to next week for me to amend my proposal. The following Monday, on February 22nd, I came to the council meeting where I witnessed a proposal for a wine bar on Howard Street who was granted almost 10 times the amount to finance their business than what I was asking for. With the City of Evanston throwing all sorts of money toward businesses, I have to ask why I was denied when I have a proven track record of being in business for 14 years, donating and sponsoring to the Evanston community, and creating jobs for Evanston youth. My downfall only came when I decided to stick my nose in the business of what was going on at the keg, and I was sued into oblivion. To be honest, I don't know what to do with my proposal. How do I convince the city government that seems determined to keep my business from opening that the City of Evanston could use a sporting goods store, and that I am worth the risk? Thank you.
Thank you. City Manager?
Yes, Mr. Fischel's application was on the February EDC agenda. The committee asked him if he would like an opportunity to make a full presentation. He indicated that he was not prepared to do so at that meeting and asked to come back at the meeting in March, and Mr. Fischel's application is on the March 28th agenda.
Mr. Bob Kuwitz, I was never given any response from the committees of what the, the concerns about my proposal was. Your staff member called me and said- concerns about my proposal was. Your staff member called me and said my project was denied, and it wasn't going to go before the committee. And only because of an email I put out that I wanted due process to go before the committee. And when I went to the agenda that was on the city website, whatever issues you guys have with my proposal, to this moment, I don't know what they are. I've never received it. I have no idea. What was put before that committee was a haphazard bunch of emails and things that I set together. I had no idea that I was supposed to be putting a dog and pony show together, and I would have been prepared for it. And I believe the only reason why you put me on the 22nd agenda was because of my emails, my open letters about how the process in this town works. And I would have done the whole PowerPoint presentation, but, you know, did I not get an email from you, Madam Mayor, saying you were sorry that we couldn't work things out with the Economic Development Department?
You didn't get an email from me telling you that anything was denied or not denied.
Well, the head didn't work out, but your staff member kind of blew it. I actually got his voicemail about the denial of the proposal. But anyways, I've been given an extension. But again, I don't know where my proposal belongs. I don't know if it belongs... You know, can I go the way of the wine bar? Can I get one of those slam dunk city council upper proposals, make it happen, slam bam, thank you ma'am, and I'm open for business?
Mr. Fischel, you're at...
Or do I go through the legal department, or do I bring a Mr. Cannon lawyer up here for it? Because I don't know what to do. I really don't know what to do.
Fischel, your application's on the March 28th Economic Development Committee agenda. Look forward to seeing you then.
All right. Thank you.
Ms. Salak, go ahead.
My name is Harriet Salak. I live at 802 South Boulevard. I understand that the city of Evanston has teams out doing an inventory of all the signage in Evanston, photographing all the signage in Evanston to keep track of the signage, to make sure, to see if there's any deterioration in the signage. I can tell you if any signs near me or that I see driving down any street had any damage. Some office in the city of Evanston would hear from me, but apparently somebody thinks that all the signage needs to be photographed, and also to be sure that, to see if it meets federal standards. I'd like to know what, when these... If these are new federal standards or pre-existing federal standards, when these took place? Is someone mentioned that it was the gauge of the metal? If it's holding up, I kind of don't really care what the gauge of the metal is, but I would like to know about this whole process. Who's paying for these teams to go out and photograph every sign of all the signage in Evanston, and there are a lot of signs in Evanston, and who's going to pay for replacing the signs that are not damaged but don't meet the federal requirement standards? That I don't have a clue what they are, but I would like some information about this, please. Thank you very much.
Our very excellent Director of Public Works is right over there. Would you please talk with her?
Is she going to speak?
No, she'll answer your question.
She'll answer all your questions outside.
And she's not going to answer so that everybody can hear the...
No.
Pardon?
We can have her make a few comments, and then if you'd like more details. I think the short of it is that the federal government is requiring this inventory. It is an unfunded mandate. The last I looked, I think there is additional discussion in the Congress of the United States, because many communities around America have raised the exact same questions you have. Why is this important? Why does this need to be done, given other priorities for infrastructure issues? However, the United States government has not changed the requirement, and so we are attempting to meet, along with every other municipality in the United States, the requirement to do this. And so we have a team out. I believe the council approved this inventory through motion, Suzette, about a couple months ago. The question was raised at the time by the council, exactly the issues you raised, and we reported back to the council that it remains a federal mandate, and until such time the Congress of the United States changes that, we are obligated to do that. Ms. Robinson?
Is this new federal mandate?
This is...
New federal requirements?
It's newer. I think there was an opportunity, a period of time for it to be, for governments to comply. So I think that has been, what, 18, 24 months, Suzette, about that?
Means it's new.
In the last couple of years.
It is new, and if you have any further questions, Suzette will be happy to answer.
She was going to say something.
Well, I think the city manager just answered it.
He... I couldn't add to it more than that.
But Suzette is here. If you'd like more details on how long and when will be finished and all of that, she can answer those particulars for you.
Okay.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. Going back to the mayor's public announcements, we have with us our VIPs, the Dorches, who are kicking off Women Out Walking. So I would like to read our certificate of recognition. The city of Evanston hereby awards this certificate of recognition to Daphne Dorch for her courageous participation in the NBC television program, The Biggest Loser, and her willingness to help kick off Evanston's Women Out Walking program. And we have the same certificate for Adrian Dorch for his courageous participation in the NBC television program, The Biggest Loser, and his willingness to help kick off Evanston's Women Out Walking program. Would you please come up? Come in, and I'll get you over to the center. Wait for the mic.
Usually on TV, they usually mic us. First of all, we'd like to thank the city of Evanston for recognizing us and thinking about us. We would like to continue to be a beacon of light for Evanston in its endeavor with WOW. We will be out March 24th at Evanston Township to kick off WOW, with is WOW Women Out Walking. In there, at that, my sister and I will be speaking about our journey, about being not only on The Biggest Loser, but how a brother and sister comes together to save each other's life through weight loss. That's pretty much what our story's about. We'll also be talking about nutrition, exercising, and some of the crazy stuff that happened on the ranch, and some of the inspirational stuff that we learned on the ranch. So we look forward for everybody coming out March 24th at ETHS to kick off WOW out with us, which is Women Out Walking. Thank you so much, once again, city of council, for this opportunity to not only get Evanston healthy, but be a part of WOW and be a part of the Health Department. Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you...
Next, we have city managers' public announcements.
May I, Mayor members of the council, good evening?
I'm sorry. While I could, I remind everyone to please vote tomorrow. That was my last announcement. Sorry.
All right. May I, Mayor members of the council, good evening. As the Dorches were kind enough to plug, Women Out Walking is kicking off on Saturday. Avon Thomas, our health director, is here. I want to give her an opportunity, maybe to give a little bit more details as what time, and if people haven't signed up, what they need to do, or if it's not too late. So Avonda, good evening.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Councilmember, city clerk, and Mr. City Manager, and our special VIP guest. I am Avonda Thomas, Director of Health Department, and I want just to remind the community that the Health Department's mission is to protect, preserve, and promote wellness for people who live here, work here, and play here. So in keeping with this mission, we're offering Women Out Walking, as the Dorches have shared, for the fourth year. And for many of you who don't know, this is a 12-week walking program. It provides thousands of nuggets of information regarding nutrition and encouragement for all to live a healthier lifestyle. The program will continue to incentivize walkers through weekly challenges. We offer health information and fitness class samplers and monthly workshops, and we provide community support through a team orientation environment and monthly group walks. And yes, there will be a competitive edge to our group walks. Our goal is to get people moving and get people in action. So the WOW walkers are given a pedometer. They're given a walking journal and a lot of inspiration and motivation. So again, we're trying to serve over 1,000 participants this year. The WOW program is free for all Evanston residents, $5 for non-Evanston residents, so you are welcome as well. If you know someone who's interested in participating, please visit our website at www.cityofevanston.org, or you can call 847-866-2920. That's 847-866-2920. The kickoff, again, is Saturday, March 24th, starting at 8:00 a.m. at Evanston Township High School. Please, all walk-in registrations are welcome, but please be mindful that equipment is for the first 1,000 participants. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, City Council, and thank you, Dorches, for being our ambassadors of health.
Next, I'd like to ask Shanee Weston, management analyst in our Community and Economic Development Department, to come up and talk about another event that's going on this Saturday morning. Shanee, good evening.
Hello. I'm Shanee Weston, Management Analyst for Community and Economic Development. Madam Mayor, City Clerk Green, and members of the city council, the city of Evanston would like to invite the public to join us for the opening reception of the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild Gallery slash Meeting Room. This is going to be an exposition of artwork by artists that present the Black experience. The opening reception will be Saturday, March 24th, 10:30 a.m. to noon, at the Lorraine H. Morden Civic Center at 2100 Ridge Avenue in room 2200. The city of Evanston, in partnership with the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild, will operate a public meeting room at the Civic Center named the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild Gallery slash Meeting Room that will display rotating artwork donated by the guild. The art will be located on the second floor of the Lorraine H. Morden Civic Center. The gallery will be accessible during regular city business hours. The opening of the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild Gallery room marks the beginning of a new effort by the city of Evanston to use the Civic Center as a place for more regular exhibits of art that hallmark the city of Evanston's community. The guild has been instrumental in conservation, preservation, and documentation of Evanston Black history through the creation of the museum and gallery on the second floor at the Fleetwood Jordan Community Center, which is located at 1655 Foster Street. The gallery has served as a source of pride and ethnic identity for the community. This event is supported, again, by the city of Evanston and the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild. The exposition is free, and it's open to the public during March 26th through April 27th, 8:30 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And you can contact me, Shanee Weston, at 847-448-8266, or email me at SWeston, W-E-S-T-O-N, at cityofevanston.org to arrange for a tour. We have members of the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild in attendance tonight. I'm not sure if they want to stand, or we can show our appreciation...
Make them stand.
Yeah, to show our appreciation for the donation of the artwork that's going to help beautify the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
And this is really a great opportunity. So much of the artwork that's part of the gallery on the second floor at Fleetwood Jordan just doesn't get the kind of exposure that it should community-wide, and we're hoping that this gallery will help change that. So thanks, my thanks to the Art Guild as well for your cooperation. One last announcement. Doug Gainer, our Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, is here to introduce a new employee.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, city manager. I'm pleased to introduce to you this evening Kevin Brown, who is our new youth and young adult program manager. Kevin comes from, to us from California. He's coordinated youth development activities with public and private agencies. He's designed community engagement and retention strategies. He's managed nationally-recognized youth development academy at an at-risk, economically-advantaged youth, created after-school programming, collaborated with local schools, universities, social surveys agencies, faith-based institutions, and law enforcement agencies to implement programs. He's established community networks of service providers and partnerships to enhance student programs. Kevin has a bachelor's degree from Northwestern University, where he played football. He has a master of arts degree from Western Seminary in Portland, and he has a Juris Doctor from Washington University. So we're really pleased that Kevin has joined our team, and we look forward to some great things for him to accomplish. What's he going to do? He's going to worth... Well, I thought I had it in his title. He's our youth and young adult program manager. He's going to focus on training and job placement for our youth, and he's one of four individuals in that section. We have another individual who I introduced a couple of weeks ago who works with Kevin, who's doing the mayor's summer youth employment program. So that's two of the programs that we're really gearing up to focus on our youth. And Kevin, if you'd like to say a few words?
Madam Mayor, city council, and distinguished citizens of the city of Evanston, it's really a pleasure and an honor and a privilege to serve the city of Evanston and especially the youth and the young adults of Evanston. Really humbly accept this position, and I'm looking forward to working with you and the community. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
City Manager, does that conclude your report?
It does, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications?
Yes, I do, Madam Mayor. Just want to let you know that the early voting ended on March 15th, and 1,515 early voters walked through outdoors, did their voting. But the big day is tomorrow, so make sure you come out and vote, cast your vote. You've earned it. If you don't use it, don't say nothing about who's put in. The other thing is to just keep in mind that if you haven't found out your new polling place, you can contact the clerk's office. We can give you that information, because some of the precincts were combined with others, and if you're not sure where you need to go, contact the clerk's office at 847-448-8189. That concludes my announcement, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Next, city manager, Special Orders of Business.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have two this evening. The first is to give you an update on the work that we've been doing over the last, gosh, almost, almost two years now, working with our neighbor communities about the issue of selling water. As you know, we have a large water treatment plant. We have customers outside of the city of Evanston, but this council challenged us to see what could we do more to increase our wholesale water sales. And Dave Stonebeck, our Utilities Director, and I have been far and wide throughout Cook County trying to interest people in our water, and we're happy to report this evening some progress. So with that, Mr. Stonebeck, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Clerk Green, and city manager Bob Kowitz. As the city manager indicated, we began communicating with other municipalities to see if they were interested in purchasing water from Evanston back in early 2010. That was because the city of Chicago had just gone through three rate increases, bringing their water rate up to $2.01 a thousand gallons, which made it competitive for Evanston to try to break into that market and sell to other wholesale water customers. It all peaked more in 2011 when Chicago announced four additional water rate increases, and they currently are at $2.51 a thousand gallons, and by 2015, they will be up to $3.82 a thousand gallons. I'd like to give you a little brief history of the Evanston Water Department. In 1874, the Evanston Community Water Supply was established at the current site of the water treatment plant. It had an intake pipe into the lake and a steam engine that had a capacity of 2 million gallons a day. In 1893, we actually began selling water to Willmet, which was our first wholesale water customer. Filters were constructed in 1913 and in 1923, and the plant had a 24 million gallon a day capacity. However, in 1934, Willmet built its own water treatment facility and began supplying the water to their own customers. In 1944, Evanston began selling water to the village of Skokie. Major plant improvements were undertaken in 1948, increasing the capacity to 60 million gallons a day, and another major plant increase was undertaken in 1964, increasing the capacity to 72 million gallons a day. We are currently under a contract with the village of Skokie to supply them wholesale water, and that contract runs through February 28th, 2017. In 1980, the city entered into a contract with the Northwest Water Commission to provide water to them. Twelve filters were rehabilitated in 1982, and 12... Twelve filters were rehabilitated in nineteen eighty-two, and twelve other filters were rerated, increasing the plant capacity to one hundred and eight million gallons a day. The Commission constructed a sixty-inch diameter pipeline from Evanston, approximately fifteen miles out to Displanes, where they have a twenty-four million gallon reservoir. From that reservoir, the Commission repumps the water to the four communities that they serve, Arlington Heights, Buffalo Grove, Palatine, and Wheeling. With the Chicago rate increase, and it became obvious that we could compete with Chicago to provide water on a wholesale rate to other municipalities. Four of them that were of a major interest are the four that were more or less along the route of the existing Northwest Water Commission Transmission Main, that being Morton Grove, Niles, Park Ridge, and Displanes. Also, Lincolnwood, which is very close to us, is another community that purchases water from Chicago and might become a wholesale water customer. A bigger, more interesting situation would be the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency, which is comprised of seven community. They too purchase their water from the City of Chicago. They have a pumping station located actually on O'Hara property, which means that it's actually within the City of Chicago property. These communities are quite large, and would, if we were able to become their wholesale water supplier, they would at least double our current capacity need. So back in 2010, the City Manager and I met with several communities to determine their interest in purchasing water. Then again, Chicago announced their significant water rates in 2011, and then Evanston met with these communities again. We had lots of verbal discussions, but nothing was ever put to writing. So in January 2012, we sent out a memorandum of understanding to all those agencies or communities, and they requested those agencies and communities participate in an engineering study to determine the proposed pipeline size, route, method of construction, and cost estimate. The memorandum indicated that we thought the engineering study could be completed at a cost of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that we would hope that no agency would pay more than thirty thousand dollars. We requested that you respond to us by March second. So far, all, everyone but Morton Grove that we contacted has agreed to participate in the engineering study. So there are six communities, and then Evanston making seven. And again, if the cost of the engineering study is one hundred and fifty thousand dollars, each participating member would cost, would pay approximately twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. So we feel that we were very successful in getting all these different government bodies together and agreeing into this engineering study. The anticipated schedule for the study is to release a request for proposal next month, receive proposals back from engineering firms in early May, working with the other agencies that are involved with it, select a qualified firm by the end of May, then go to all the different boards again to get joint approval to participate in the engineering study, have a draft study completed by the consultant in October, and then have a final study completed in December 2012. The action that we're asking for tonight is that you authorize the City Manager to execute the memorandums of understanding with the different communities and agencies that have returned them, and allow us to proceed with the release of a request for proposal for the engineering study. That's our big drive for tonight. One other thing that I do want to mention is a one-year extension to the Agreement for Wholesale Water Sales Engineering Services with CDM Smith, which is Agenda Item A three point seven, that was already placed on the consent agenda by the APW Committee. That was a, that would be a totally different study than the Transmission Main. These are engineers that the city approved to hire last year. We want to proceed again with them this year, and one of the things that they would help us do is to do a cost of service study to help us determine what an appropriate rate might be to the other municipalities in the future. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks, Dave. Why didn't Morton Grove say no?
At this time, they indicated that they don't have the funding necessary to participate in this study.
I think more accurately, they didn't say yes.
Uh-huh, okay.
I think as you see, and if you look, maybe if we could put the, put the map out, the, this has happened sort of incrementally. We've started at the ends and kind of had to work our way through the middle with the, what's known, and I hate to use acronyms, but the Northwest Suburban Municipal Joint Action Water Agency goes by the acronym NIMZI-JAWA. Honest to gosh, that's what they're called, the NIMZI-JAWA. So we've been fortunate to, they were one of the first to agree with us. Lincolnwood also has been very interested, but then Niles, Displanes, Park Ridge, kind of all played a little game of chicken. Nobody, everybody thought it was a good idea, but no one wanted to jump first. And literally today, at four forty-five, is when we received the indication formally from, was it?
Displanes and Park Ridge.
Displanes and Park Ridge, that they had received the authorization from their city councils over the last couple of weeks, but only today did they decide to actually sign, because they, once Dave was able to share with them that everybody was in, except Morton Grove, that they all felt comfortable to move forward. You may have seen some press reports that the Village, or the City of Displanes, is also pursuing discussions with Willmet and Glenview, so they're trying to kind of hedge their bets a couple of different ways. We've been in touch with them, and certainly that's their prerogative. But we hope that now that this is public, that all the other communities have come in, we may be able to convince Morton Grove. They're going through some change in leadership. They have an interim village manager in Morton Grove, so we're hoping that once new staff's in place in Morton Grove. So we will not exclude them, they have not said no, but as Dave has indicated, we really felt we needed to set some deadlines, and quite honestly, that's what got this started, is when we put a, drew a line saying, "You need to let us know by the first of March if you're in or you're out," all of these communities then, at that point, took it to their various city councils, the Northwest Water Commission acting separately. Dave and I were out there as recently as last week in order to talk with them, because there may be different models as to how this all works, and we just wanted to know who was all at the table, and that map that you have before you now is the universe of communities that are at the table.
Alderman Wynn.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Stonebeck. Can you tell us, what, where are we right now with our capacity to produce water with our water plant? And if, in the best-case scenario occurred, what would we need to do, make improvements to increase our capacity at our plant?
Sure, I could do that. One thing I want to clarify first, though, is that each municipality has its own water allocation. So Evanston has a water allocation to withdraw water from Lake Michigan, but then so does each municipality, so we would not be using Evanston's allocation to provide water to these other communities, and we would not be withdrawing any more water from Lake Michigan, because all these communities currently get water from Lake Michigan just through the Chicago Treatment Plant. So I wanted to clarify that first. Our water treatment plant is currently rated at one hundred and eight million gallons a day. We're under contractual relationship with the Northwest Water Commission to provide them up to fifty-five million gallons a day. And then for Evanston and Skokie, you take our average day use, and you have to add a peaking factor to that. So overall, between our contractual commitment and our peaking factors for Evanston and Skokie, we feel that we need to have ninety-two million gallons reserved for them, which leaves us sixteen million gallons of spare capacity that we have right now. So depending on how it all plays out, if just one or two communities come on board, we wouldn't need to do anything. If four of the communities come on without the NIMZI-JAWA, then we would have to have an expansion at the plant. Any expansion would include another intake into the lake, but different scenarios as to how we would handle that at the plant. If the NIMZI-JAWA came on board, then yes, we'd be looking at a major plant renovation. We would actually probably have two water treatment plants within our current footprint. We would remove our oldest filters from nineteen thirteen and nineteen twenty-three and place membrane filtration systems in that same space. We would have to use the vacant corner property at Milburn and Sheridan and put a new high-lift pumping station in there to pump that capacity out at a higher pressure than what we currently pump out to Evanston and Skokie.
May I ask one more question?
Go ahead.
Are we looking at any other, to add any other communities to this group?
We specifically are not looking beyond this group, but I know that the Northwest Water Commission, as well as NIMZI-JAWA, are in conversation with other municipalities out west and to the north that might join their organizations. So growth, in my opinion, would be through those agencies.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey.
Given your explanation of the expansion requirements in the final analysis, would it end up being a profitable venture?
In the cost analysis that I have performed, and just myself, it would be very profitable, yes. We would be allowed to earn a reasonable profit on every one of our contracts that would allow us to make considerable amount of money.
One other question, Madam Mayor. The special order, the MOU, includes thirty thousand contribution, thirty thousand dollars contribution by each of the group, each of the municipalities that have signed on.
We anticipated a maximum of thirty thousand.
Well, that's what I mean, but I mean they've agreed to contribute.
That's what the MOU indicates, yes.
And would, while you say that the, that the extension for engineering services for wholesale water is a separate issue, is it the same contractor, is it the same engineering group that will be doing this study? It is?
It is not, not necessarily. We, we current, our contract with CDM was originated last year, we're asking for a one-year extension on it. We are proposing to go out for a request for a proposal to hire an engineer to design the transmissions, a study for the transmission, not designing, perform a study to determine its route and size. CDM Smith might be one of the people that submit a proposal on that, and if all the agencies agree that they deem them to be the most qualified, then that's who we would recommend.
Thank you. I was confused by that.
City Manager.
If I could just amplify, that's a very important point that Alderman Rainey raises, because each of these communities have their own water engineers, and so there is a great concern that whoever's selected be selected by all the communities that are involved. So I think we're all playing fairly, we all have our cards up on the table, but certainly as we've talked to each individual community, their city council members have all expressed concern that this be as objective as possible, because I think this is a lot of money. We were talking tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, depending on how this all goes, and everyone's a little skittish about it. So we want to make sure that that process is open and transparent as possible, and that was a key point in talking with the communities, and while we, there is, there is specific language in these MOUs, because if, we all can't rely on the information collectively, I think that would be a real hindrance for all of us. So we all want as objective an opinion and estimates as possible of what the costs would be, because it'll be very difficult decisions for some of these smaller communities, because potentially to buy in will cost a lot of money. If everyone were to buy in, we're looking at not a, not a pipe, but a tunnel, and that tunnel could be what, Dave, in excess of ten feet?
We would propose to bore a ten-foot hole and put a ninety-six-inch diameter pipe inside of it.
So it's big, and so we want to make sure that the consultant is agreed to by everyone and is looked as being objective, so when people are making those commitments in these other communities, they'll know that those numbers are sound.
I'd like to thank you, Dave, you've done a wonderful job, and City Manager, you have as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, we would ask that the council move the recommended act.
Is there a motion? Alderman Rainey.
Madam Mayor, I move that we accept the memorandum of understanding with area municipalities for the study of future water sales.
Second. Thank you, this is a money vote. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Aye.
Alderman Holm.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes.
And Madam Mayor, if we can just all wish Dave good luck, he's bringing a couple of gallons of good Evanston water with him to the Illinois Chapter of the American Water Works Association Annual Conference down in Springfield. We are the representative of the Lake Michigan water producers this year. We have won the regional contest, and so now we are putting our drinking water up against other competitors from around Illinois, and we're hoping this year to bring home the title of best tasting drinking water in all of Illinois, so.
Go Dave!
And our own Kevin Lucas is going to be installed as president of the Illinois Chapter of the American Water Works Association, so we hope that that will, I don't, he doesn't get a seat on the tasting board, though, does he? Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next item is the presentation of a proposed revision to our economic development plan. As you all know, we have invested a lot of time, energy, and resources in giving a fresh look to our economic development efforts citywide. A few weeks ago, we presented to the Economic Development Committee a draft of that, the committee reported favorably on the draft report and forwarded it to the city council for its consideration. And Nancy Rakovic, our Economic Development Bureau Manager, is here this evening with that proposed plan with a presentation. Nancy, good evening.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Green and City Manager Bob Kowitz. I'm Nancy Razovich, I'm the Economic Development Manager, and what we're going to run through tonight is an overview of the economic development plan that was included in your packet. We wanted to start out by really giving a comprehensive view of all the commercial areas within the City of Evanston, because I think it's pretty substantial. We've got a really good economic development team in place, and the teams are pretty much assigned at this point and working on retention, attraction, expansion efforts throughout the community in all of these areas. I refer back to the economic development vision statement that was adopted by the city council back in January eleventh, 2010, because this became a really key framework in how we put together this economic development plan. There's some key aspects in this, promoting and supporting citywide entrepreneurial culture, retaining and expanding existing businesses, attracting new businesses, fostering startups, including technology companies, employment growth, and tax base enhancement being the two essential components, particularly the goals of this, particularly with respect to Evanston employers and trying to get opportunities for Evanston residents to get Evanston-based jobs. I highlight below that the two key aspects of this vision statement are the goals of job creation and increased taxes and revenues. Within that economic development vision statement, there was also these four key components, business retention and expansion, business attraction, area and commercial revitalization and redevelopment, and marketing. And these are things that we have been working on, and they are part of our day-to-day operations and will be, continue to be carried forward. The vision statement and the plan build off of what we think are the really key aspects of the strengths of Evanston, quality of life, the diverse population, the high-quality public schools, and the great recognized university that we have here, the diverse cultural and performing arts facilities and groups that we have, the two strong healthcare institutions, our access to public transportation, our access to Lake Michigan, which we talked a little bit about just now, and our really strong entrepreneurial, business-based community. Those are really, really key components, and we're really fortunate to try to build off of those. What we really are, there's a couple of key principles that we tried to bring forward in this plan. Some of them are listed below. So one of them is to emphasize innovation, innovation in both existing business retention, expansion, and attraction of new businesses. And this is really in response to making sure that as the economy continues to change, that we're looking at businesses and trying to help support our businesses to be more creative and innovative as they're trying to keep up with those changes and help to predict the new changes that might be coming forward. Nurture entrepreneurship. It's just, it's just one of the key components to Evanston business community. It's beyond just those technology-based businesses. It's the, you know, the local small business owners. Entrepreneurship just runs the full spectrum, and it's really critical to our balanced economy here. Creating jobs and workforce training, and this is really important, that we need to work together with the new staff person in Parks and Rec and Joe McCray on some of these workforce training initiatives, because what we really want to do is, as we're looking at promoting businesses that create jobs, we want to make sure that we've got opportunities for our residents to be able to get some of those jobs that are being created in town. And then again, we're back to promoting Evanston locally, regionally, nationally, globally, every way that we can. And we're looking at taking a variety of opportunities to increase the promotion of Evanston, both through the traditional medias, as well as through, you know, social medias, trade shows, et cetera. What I wanted to come back to is just really emphasize how important it is that we really recognize the importance of looking at each individual neighborhood, commercial areas, and looking at the retention, expansion, and attraction of businesses that really fit with those. So in a lot of cases, those are going to be traditional business entities: retails, various retail entities, offices, manufacturing. In addition to focusing on those traditional markets, we've also worked on, and are proposing, five targeted industries to also support our focus. These include, the first one is technology-based businesses. Again, this really stems off of our, our base entrepreneur that we have downtown. We have a couple of incubators and cowork spaces that have a lot of really, really great young people trying to start new businesses. Feeding off of that, we also have the talent pool coming out of Northwestern. What we're looking at this is, is recognizing that we will need to do a public-private partnership, work with our partners to, you know, help create this, enhance this entrepreneurship culture. Look at creating both physical and virtual spaces for programs so that people can network, do education, and do events. One of the key aspects is, is really trying to help focus this plan to make sure that we're helping these businesses transition from startups to second and beyond-stage companies. We also want to make sure that there's a focal point for angel and venture capital investors, which is one of the key aspects to being able to get these, these startup businesses to be able to expand. And we know that, based on some research that was done through a Northwestern class recently, we know that we need to look at our office space and inventory, and maybe looking at some partners to help us expand some of those opportunities so that we can keep some of these businesses in town. One of the other areas is healthcare and wellness. In 2009, approximately eighteen percent of the population worked in the healthcare industry. It's expected that this is going to grow, continue to grow over the years. And by 2018, it's expected that twenty-two percent of the workforce will be in those healthcare-related fields. Evanston has a great advantage. We have two hospitals, not only two hospitals, but there are two Trauma One Centers right in town. So we've got a great advantage to take, to look at, kind of pulling off of those two hospitals, to look at complementary businesses that can help support those hospitals, look at things like other medical office buildings, but also look at wellness-related industries and businesses. That's going to be a key aspect to make sure that this is a balanced program moving forward. Our third one is, is baby boomer markets. Baby boomers make up a great, twenty-six percent of the population at this point, and that's, again, expected to, to go up. We've got, Evanston has historically been very attractive to baby boomers. What we like to call, you know, some people call it retirees, empty nesters, et cetera. All of the key aspects that, that are important to them seem to be here: university, we've got an active downtown, we've got a cultural and diverse entertainment base, access to public transportation, strong healthcare. What we're going to be looking at for this is making sure that as we're recruiting businesses, that they're age-friendly, which is a terminology to make sure that it crosses all spectrums of age groups, and that there is accessibility issues as, as this population ages in place. The next one we have is arts and entertainment. This one, a lot of these are interrelated. Arts and entertainment, Evanston obviously has a strong history of having a, a good culture for theater and arts and, and supporting that diversity of the population. We think it's very important to make sure that we take advantage of this. It helps not only our residents, but it helps our, our young businesses and employees that are going to be coming to town, as well as it helps to attract visitors. Expanding these types of entities, or, or, you know, making sure that we're keeping them and expanding them, is important. Not only they, they have jobs, but it's also, in some cases, particularly with entertainment revenue, or entertainment venues, there's additional opportunities for revenues from things like liquor tax and amusement tax. So we think there's a really good opportunities for arts and entertainment venues throughout the city. We'll be looking at an NEA grant that's technically focused on the downtown, but we're going to use that data and make sure that we look at citywide entertainment and theater opportunities and use interviews with some of our existing theater groups, as well as people outside the city, to complement that. Our last one is, is kind of one of these water industries. It's one of these that we wanted to go beyond the traditional markets and look at something that was a little bit more aggressive in terms of potentially getting us some additional revenues. I think coming right off of Dave Stonebeck's presentation, this might make sense. And what we're looking at is, because the city, one of the greatest assets, is our access to water, we can actually get additional revenues from the sale of the water, not only to the businesses, businesses that may be high-water users or do water-related research, not only within our community, but in the surrounding community. So this is an opportunity for a revenue generator that we're looking into. In terms of next steps, what we are looking at doing is, from this plan, we plan to update our economic development work program. That work program is really going to get much more detailed in terms of strategies and actions, in terms of how to implement this plan, and also help establish performance criteria and outcome measures for, as we move forward, to make sure that these things are making sense, to allow us to evaluate our economic development efforts. What we vision this as is kind of a fluid document, that we want to keep evaluating this as we move forward. And again, that's what those outcome measures will allow us to do. One of the things that, that I inadvertently omitted here is that, as part of this update to the work program, we want to have, for lack of a better word, an economic development summit, and pull together some of the key members of the community, the, the city council, and kind of talk through the best opportunities for implementation, strategies, and actions for this plan.
Thank you. Alderman Grover.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am both grateful for this plan and for a staff that's able to put it into action. It's, it's about time. We've been talking about this for a couple of years now, it feels like, and it's nice to have some targets. We, we, last week at the National League of Cities Conference, we learned a lot about economic activity and economic development. And what we heard aligns a lot with this economic development plan that I hope to take the word "draft" off of tonight. One is, though, that we need to align our local education with the local economy. So we need to make sure that our high school and community college programs are creating the types of employees that our local employers want. So it's really kind of smart workforce development. And, and another part of that is to leverage our anchor institutions, and we get to that with the health, focus on healthcare here. We have, our anchor institutions are obviously, well, the city, I suppose, but two hospitals, the university, Rotary International, two school districts. And they're looking for opportunities to do more purchasing locally. And so the suggestion was that you, you create those businesses that allow you to do local purchasing and things that you may not think of, such as industrial laundry service, or landscaping services, recycling shredding services. All of that can be created locally to serve our anchor institutions. They may be outsourcing it outside of Evanston at the moment, but those are all opportunities for Evanston. And they had lots of recommendations on how you might put together the financing to make it happen. So it's very interesting.
Would someone like to make a motion to accept the report?
I so move.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Nancy. Is that the end of your?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. First item on the consent agenda is the approval of the minutes of the council meeting of February 27. The Administration of Public Works Committee recommends approval of the payroll through February 26, The Evanston bills through March 20th in the amount of $3,941,913.91. And the credit card activity for the period ending January 31, the amount of $81,880.63. The committee requests your approval in response to requests for bids through the municipal partnering committee to award the 2012 UPM, which is Unique Pavement Material, Coal Patch Material, purchased to Gallagher Materials in the not-to-exceed amount of $50,000. We ask your approval also for renewal of the Watercraft Maintenance and Repair Services Contract to Full Throttle Marine, Inc., in a not-to-exceed amount of $40,000 for the period April 15, 2012, through the April 14, 2013. Item 3.4 is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Next, we recommend your approval for the rental of scaffolding from Gilco Scaffolding Company. This is an emergency purchase for pedestrian safety purposes during the inspection of the Sherman Parking Garage facade. The estimated costs are $31,672 for the installation and removal. We ask your approval also for the manager to execute a contract for the 2012 Curden Place Pipeline Contract, A, with American Pipe, in the amount of $362,408. Your approval is also requested to authorize the city manager to execute a one-year extension to the agreement to provide engineering services associated with wholesale water sales to CDM Smith in the not-to-exceed amount of $100,000. We ask your approval also of the estimated annual user charge for 2012 with the Municipal Water Reclamation District of Greater Chicago for disposal of sludge generated as part of the water treatment process in the amount of $304,119.65. Your approval is also requested for modification to the 2012 Capital Improvement Program to resurface additional streets in the amount of $1 million and to place, and to replace power centers in the amount of $250,000. Funding will be provided by the General Fund Reserve. The next item, A6, is off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. It's been, request has been made of our staff by the committee. Next item is Resolution 7R12. We recommend approval to authorize the city manager to execute a 20-year easement agreement with Sines LLC for the installation of dark fiber optic cable on public property at the alleyway south of Davis and east of Orington Avenue for a fee of $2,015. We request your approval also for 13R12, which authorizes the manager to execute an easement agreement with Evanston Venture Partners LLC, formerly Focus Development, and the city's right-of-way adjacent to the property, commonly known as 1717 Ridge Avenue, for the installation of tieback rods and earth retention materials for a fee of $3,050. We ask your approval also for Resolution 21R12, which designates Room 2200 in the Lorraine H. Morton Civic Center as the Fleetwood Jordan Art Guild Meeting Room. The room will serve as a gallery and meeting room. Ordinance 32012 is for introduction tonight. We request your approval to authorize the city manager to execute an assignment of a real estate contract for the purchase of real property at 122325 Chicago Avenue.
Yes, I'll have to consent.
Okay, just keep in mind it's for introduction.
Oh, I'm sorry. Never mind. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Anybody else for introduction? Okay. To support the parking needs at the new Trader Joe's Development at 1211 Chicago Avenue, for introduction. Next is Ordinance 29012, which increases the number of Class C licenses from 27 to 28 to permit issuance to San Calp and Shanti LLC, doing business as Mount Everest Restaurant, at 630 Church Street. The Local Liquor Commissioner also recommends adoption of Ordinance 30012, which amends Section 356AA of the City Code of 1979 as amended to permit service of alcoholic liquor for immediate consumption. This is for introduction. For introduction also is Ordinance 31012, which amends subsection 356AC of the City Code 1979 as amended to permit consumption of alcoholic beverages purchased on-site in all viewing auditoriums, and I think it should say at Century Theater. A14 is for action. This is Ordinance 23012. And your, your approval is recommended for adoption to increase the number of Class B licenses from 16 to 17. This is off the consent agenda. I beg your pardon, Madam Mayor. Off the consent agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair and sent back to the Liquor Commission. A15, Ordinance 14012. We request approval of decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses from 24 to 23 due to the closure of Donatella Mediterranean Bistro, 1512 Sherman Avenue. Also for action is adoption of Ordinance 15012, increasing the number of Class C liquor license, Class D liquor licenses from 23 to 24 to permit issuance to Crepebury, San Jermaine, at 1512 Sherman Avenue. For action also is 16012, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses from 24 to 25 to permit issuance to D'Orkey, 52426 Davis Street. Next is Item A18, and this is for action also, Ordinance 18012, which decreases the number of Class B liquor licenses from 17 to 16 due to the closure of Merle Steakhouse, or Smokehouse, at 1727 Benson Avenue. Next, A19 is for action as well. The Transportation and Parking Committee and staff recommend adoption of Ordinance 20012, amending the City Code under Residential Parking Disemption District A to exempt residents of Residential Parking District A from the two-hour parking restriction on Benson Avenue on the East Side, University Place to Emerson. The Human Services Committee, the Township Supervisor, recommends council approval of their payroll bills and medical payments for the month of February, $154,333.48. The Economic Development Committee recommends your approval of modifications to the facade improvement program described in the staff memo and the updated facade improvement program guidelines and program agreement dated February 17. Under appointments, for the Minority Women and Evanston Business Enterprise Development Committee, the mayor recommends Donna Sue for reappointment to the firefighters' pension board. Liz Rourke is recommended. And with that, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to zero. The consent agenda passes. Alderman Burris, could we have Administration and Public Works?
Yes, the committee asks your approval of A3.4, approval of purchase of auto parts from Carquest. And Alderman Rainey would like to address this?
Alderman Rainey, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. During the Administration and Public Works Committee, I pointed out that while, you know, we, I very much support using regional and national purchasing plans to economize on various city purchases. However, there are some cases where there are small purchases, such as this one, which is well under $100,000, which is in the area of $70,000. And it is for a purchase being made through a national purchasing plan when, for Carquest, which is located in Evanston, but is every bit as much a local business as is Home Depot or Sam's. They do have a business here, but they also have company, they also have stores throughout the United States, Canada and Mexico. So, it's not exactly a local business, although I'm sure they have some Evanston employees. In this case, auto parts, small auto parts, and for 70-some thousand a year, you know it's minor purchases. The North Suburban Auto on Howard Street has been there for 40 years. And the man who owns it is a contributor to Evanston. He's been there for 40 years. He worked there as an employee and then purchased the business. This is a guy who could have left that location years and years ago. Instead, he anchored that corner at Custer and Howard Street. He did not bid several years ago because he refused, when we put it out to bid, he said he would not pay the $1,000 bond, whatever we required at the time to place the bid. However, this time, in the meantime, he has gone and bid on Lincolnwood and has gotten the Lincolnwood contract. I am concerned, and taking this off the agenda so I can vote no, because this man was not given an opportunity. When I asked our staff to explain, you know, how the bidding took place, I was told it wasn't. And that our normal way of doing things is when we use a national purchasing or regional purchasing plan, we do check around to see if other people get estimates, to see how others would compare if we did put it out to bid. In this case, we didn't. We just used the bad experience or the bad, I got the sense that our staff had a bad taste in their mouth from the last experience with North Suburban Auto. However, over the years, the city always purchased from North Suburban Auto until, I think it was 2009, when we began using Carquest. So, I object to the fact that they weren't even given a chance to say no. They weren't given a chance to say yes. They weren't given a chance to bid. They weren't even given a chance, admittedly by the Fleet Service Director, to give estimates of what they would charge. So, having just listened to Nancy give the economic development plan and the vision of focusing so strongly on local business, I find it really amazing that this business was literally aced out of the process. So, that's my complaint and my objection to this purchase.
Thank you. Seeing no lights indicating anyone else wants to speak on this issue, City Clerk, would you call the roll? Or wait a minute, it was moved and, wasn't moved. Sorry about that. Thank you, Alderman Holmes. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Now, it's been moved and seconded. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Eight to one.
Eight to one. The motion passes.
A6, the committee has, we're holding this in committee. The committee's asked for additional information and will be on the April 10 agenda. And this is the approval of the 2012 Fleet Purchasing Plan and Green Initiative update. And A14, Ordinance 23-0-12, increasing the number of Class B liquor licenses to permit issuance to Evanston Pub Incorporated, also known as World of Beer. We're sending it back to the Liquor Commission to consider establishment of a new class liquor license. And I don't know if Mr. Farrar would like to explain what we're doing legally.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Clerk Green, Grant Farrar Corporation Council, yes, direction was received at the committee hearing to, to the Law Department to research and draft language creating a new tavern slash bar license, which would be considered by the local liquor hearing committee, which is, of course, chaired by Mayor Tisdale, is the local liquor control commissioner. So, that is the direction that was given and received, and we will comply with said direction.
Excuse me, that would be a straight bar license?
That was the direction of the committee, yes. That is correct, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Burris.
I should explain, the reason why we felt we couldn't approve the liquor license as is, is because the, what they're proposing at World of Beer does not conform with them, the liquor license they're asking for. They're not deemed a restaurant, what they're asking to do. So, we felt that we could not approve it as it stands. And so, we're trying to find an alternate way to approve this. And the only way we could think of was to do a new liquor license class.
Thank you for the explanation. I'm still working hard at the concept, trying to get my brain around it. Okay, does that conclude your report, Alderman Burris?
Yes.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right. And I believe we are at call of the wards. Who did we start with? Alderman Wilson?
I just want to challenge the predictions of record-low voter turnouts for tomorrow and encourage everyone to actually get out and vote. It's not the most exciting election, but it is still a very important election nonetheless. So, please make sure you make the time tomorrow.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Tindham?
No report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Yes, Madam Mayor, a quick report. First, thank you to Matt Swankowski, our Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator for a really excellent Evanston day in Springfield two weeks ago, and a very productive and well-planned trip to Washington last week for the National League of Cities Conference. I think a report will follow. We've also, just last week, lost a really remarkable Evanstonian, and if you'll give me a minute to remark upon her. Her name was Betty Moore, and we said goodbye to her on Saturday. She was 92 years old and lived in her house at the corner of Jenks and Prairie for 56 years. She began teaching career as a phys ed teacher at the Chicago Public Schools, took a leave of absence, I think during the war, to work as an air traffic controller in Cleveland, came back and was hired in at Evanston Public Schools, where she taught phys ed at both, I think, Lincolnwood and Central School for many years until her retirement in 1981. She often played the voice of God during the Easter vigil at St. Athanasius Church because she had such a lovely low voice. And there were jokes at her funeral about, finally, God will meet his body double, his voice double. So, she was our neighborhood matriarch and a really extraordinary person, a historian. So, I miss up Betty already, but I wanted you to know about her. Betty Moore.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to make a reference, and I guess I need a vote of the council on this, to the Minority Women and Evanston Business Committee, so that they can discuss what happened with this auto parts purchase and come back to the council and the city manager with a plan for how this council can sit and vote almost unanimously to ace out a local business when they well could have been included. I just find that, that it is so hypocritical of us to do something like that because, as the city manager put it, and other members of the council said, it would take too much time. You know, if we're so interested in writing pages and pages of economic development plans and visions, you know, let's put our money where our mouth is. All right, that's one thing. Next, speaking of people who have passed, a fabulous couple in this town by the Carters, Mr. and Mrs. Carter. You will recall the Carters because Mr. Carter is the man that had the unbelievable collection of baseball cards that ended up being worth millions of dollars. They have both died. And if you all noted in the city manager's weekly report, the Carters have left to the Levy Center just under a half a million dollars. And I asked, is there any, who can we write to to thank? And do you know what? There's nobody left. There's nobody left to thank except the Carters. So, I would like us to give a round of applause to the Carters.
Indeed.
Thank you. Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Did you want us to vote on your reference?
Oh, I think you have to because it's not a standing committee.
Would you like to make a motion?
Aye, so move.
Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
I want something to.
Alderman Burris?
I too want to thank everyone who came to the ninth ward meeting a couple of weeks ago, and Alderman Rainey attended, as well as former Alderman Anjana Hansen. I also want to thank Matt Swankowski and City Manager Bob Kowitz for putting together a wonderful day in Springfield and learning a lot, as well as going to Washington and meeting with Senator Kirk's office, as well as the Secretary of Transportation at the White House, which was interesting, and Shakowsky's office. It was a wonderful learning opportunity, and I think we'll be having a report very shortly from the people that attended. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
I would just like to add on to Don Wilson's sentiment and challenge our residents to turn out and vote, and hopefully you'll all do the right thing.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'd like to echo Alderman Burris's and Alderman Grover's thanks to Matt Swankowski for his excellent work in Washington, DC. We all came back having learned a great deal. In particular, we have a lot to say about workforce training. And again, I say, get out and vote.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion for us?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate in minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6 and C21.
Been moved and seconded. You don't need to do that. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.